Welcome everyone to City Council meeting for Monday, January 29th. If we could have a roll call to establish the form, please ma'am.
David Mitchell.
Here.
Mickey Schneider.
Here.
Bob Thomas.
Here.
Melissa Green.
Here.
Kristy Kendrick.
Here.
Terry McLung.
I'm here.
We have six.
We can stand and pledge allegiance please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Get a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion.
Anybody got anything? I have one item. After getting a lot of comments from the citizens, I would like for the City Council for us to put on the agenda to reconsider our vote not to broadcast.
Second.
All right.
Is that under unfinished which?
Beg your pardon?
Is that under new business?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. We have anything else on the agenda? If not, all those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, sing five a saying aye.
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 Okay. Motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, additions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, sing five a saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay. Five one.
Correct.
All right. Well, this comes at the time of the year when I get to give a state of the city address to the public and to the City Council. And it's actually, you know, we overview, we kind of started the 2017 with a new budget freeze, which came out of our financial restraints that we were facing at the City Council and all the departments and all the city services were responding with this budget freeze with a lot of resolve, rigor, and new discipline. And one year later, we've discovered the financial well-being of the city is much healthier, as evidenced by, from the available money in our general fund that we discussed in our budget meeting at the end of 2017, we've actually transferred money into reserves. This reverses a long trend of not only withdrawing from the savings of the city, but we actually deposited money into the city this year. The council also recently adopted and will soon codify another plan to pay off the two water and sewer bonds early, which results in a savings of $250,000 in interest alone. So while I'm on the subject of water and sewer, you know, I know our rate increases in the establishment of the infrastructure and improvement fees have been a point of consternation for us all, but we are required by state law to operate these city services in a manner that the fees charged cover the cost of providing those services. Additionally, we're required by the bond covenants to operate the Fund 80 at a rate of 123 percent. So prior to the water sewer rate increase of 2017, we're not satisfying either of these mandated requirements. We're actually violating the law and violating our bond requirements. And since the rate increase, we're finally in a position of, one, operating in compliance with state law, for the first time in 11 years, operating in compliance with a bond covenant, and finally in a position to actually begin addressing the crumbling infrastructure of the city. All of this is to say something pretty fundamental. We've been operating with our belts since pretty tight, and we're now finally seeing the fruits of our labor. When I ran for mayor, I ran, I wanted to focus the efforts on infrastructure, which we all knew was a major concern. But in order to get to this point of actually addressing the infrastructure, we had some very big and very financial constraints that had to be addressed. There's no ignoring these financial constraints, and they require dealing with and dealing with now. Before I move on to the traditional recap of departments and commission of the city, I want to take a moment to personally thank the departments for their commitments and to the City Council for our financial health. Departments have stood solidly as one in the budget freeze, and they've operated from a plate of deep understanding of the city budget as a whole to hold the line on all spending. Department expenditures for 2017 were at least 10 percent under projections for the year. And to the staff of the city of Eureka Springs, I want to thank you for your commitment to being excellent stewards for the people's money. Your efforts are both recognized and deeply appreciated. Eureka Springs fortunate to be served by departments within the city who are truly dedicated to serving in the best possible manner. I'd like to highlight now some of the department commission works in 2017 to give you a glimpse of the work that they've accomplished in serving Eureka Springs. In the police department, they had over 1,660 calls for service with 757 offense and incident reports. These reported had 14 reports of domestic disturbances resulting in 13 arrests or warrants, with 835 uniform citations, and 277 arrests made, and 58 noise violations issued. With the fire department, EMS, they responded to 117 fire and rescue incidents. The department also had 1,468 EMS incidences, which was almost a 9 percent increase over 2016. The fire department EMS also prepared an RFP and was awarded a contract to provide the services for the Western District, and this contract was worth approximately $250,000. So, you know, our revenues for the year for 2017, the fees for the services were $514,000. And the Western District contract ended up being $252,864. This is a significant increase over last year. We had a total of $766,968. So our new billings contract and new collection contracts, which the EMS worked with, had finally paid off and worked to increase our revenue. We hosted, they also hosted monthly emergency medical responsive training for the Western Carroll County EMR Alliance members. The 2017 EMS First Responders Conference was held in March, hosting 250 attendees from all over the state. This has become the second largest EMS education conference for the state of Arkansas. We're extremely proud to say that our fire department members have attended over 5,000 man-hours of in-house fire, EMS, rescue, and hazmat training to ensure constant state of readiness to respond to any emergency in our community. The public works stayed busy because one of the first projects we had in 2017 was rebuilding a wall under the curb on Center Street and replacing the sewer line. They also went from there to moving the wall under the curb across from Sweet Spring and stabilizing the Spring Street, with stopping the stormwater flowing underneath the Spring Street building. At the same time, over the years, they repaired Morris, Norris, Mountain, and Lake Laserna Road, including the bridge, Dawson, and rebuilt Point. The flooding at the end of April resulted in damages to several street and the wastewater plant, some of which the repairs are still in progress and were in the process of seeking federal funds. The state turnback funding is currently $42.50 per capita. Out of that, we applied, used that to apply over 100 tons of asphalt on our streets in We contracted for hydrocleaning and cameraing of the 15-inch main on South Main Street when we discovered a low spot and we had to remove the grease that had been built up in the sewer system. The flooding in the spring caused several issues throughout the system, and we once again will have to use FEMA funding for repairs. We replaced the sewer mains on Hilton, Hillside, Cushion, King, and Spring, and a large amount of time was devoted to applying for our NPDES and no discharge permits for the sewer plant, which are renewable every five years. It's interesting to note that 47 percent of our wastewater budget is for plant operating and maintenance and utilities. We're hoping to reduce our loss by repairing the leaks and lessening the pressure per square inch in several main distribution lines. This process will allow evaluation of water quality and assist in identifying and scheduling projects. Our largest loss is from the older mains located in the high-pressure zones, which increased cost. We recently discovered and repaired several substantial leaks. With our water sales remaining constant, we've reduced our purchase costs to Caribou and Water District by 16 percent. In the transit, they had over 115,505 rides overall in the system, and that's with 188,135 miles driven. Had five, over 5,000 rides on share ride, which was up 87 percent with revenues of The system fare revenue was $214,000, up 4.4 percent. And our total system revenue is $400,742, which is up 1.1 percent. Had over 8,500 riders on tram tours, which generated $140,414 in tram revenues. The trolleys, the transit department also purchased a hometown carriage trolley, installed new bike racks for the fixed route vehicles, and improved the heating system and the maintenance facilities. And they're in the process and right now providing solar panels for up on the park and ride buildings. They received over 743,000 federal and state fundings. I'm proud to note that the Eureka Springs Transit System is the only transit system in the state that is solely self-supporting and does not receive any city funding. The CAPC in 2017 brought opportunities and challenges. Because of the unsettling political climate, flooding competition for the tourist dollars, we gave the CAPC tax collection a 1 percent increase from 2016 to $1,432,415. Despite the slower collection, this still remains the largest collection in CAPC history, rise of approximately 35 percent from 2010. Overall, we had 9,000 stories generating, reaching 4.2 billion people around the world with a PR value of $7.16 million. In 2018, they're planning on bringing television broadcasts to Dallas, Oklahoma City, Tulsa, Little Rock, Springfield, Kansas City, as well as Northwest Arkansas and Joplin and Pittsburgh. So this with $100,000 digital push will bring awareness from Eureka Springs City to 100,000s of viewers and readers, many for the first time. The Parks Department, they had completed the phase one of campground improvements. And if you haven't been out there to see the new playgrounds, they have a great new playground system out there. They've completed the exterior renovations and completion of the mini cabins. They hosted the mountains, state mountain bike championships, and entered into a cooperative agreement with Northwest Arkansas Trail Blazers to construct new downhill trails at Leatherwood. They finished the year $25,000, $25,000 over last year in Leatherwood revenue and under the overall operating budget. 2017 produced a 75 percent increase in revenue over 2015 at Lake Leatherwood. With increased revenue and a consistent funding source with the passage of Lake Leatherwood tax, Parks is now able to begin effectively and realistically long-term planning to preserve, protect, and enhance the resource under our management. No recap of 2017 should go without mention of the strides made on ADA compliance. In 2017, we moved all city meetings to fully accessible facilities, primarily here in the auditorium. We established an ADA complaint review committee and procedures to address specific issues that citizens may be experiencing. Developed a draft of the ADA Self-Assessment Transition Plan has been written and is in revision stages, currently in order to bring this into municipal code. And thanks, we want to thank all the citizens who made the ADA compliance a focus area. Economic Development Task Force has completed several major research projects in retail analysis and workforce development. In partnership with Wind Rock International and the RKO Economic Development Commission, progress has been made on developing a tech and innovation center and developing a new business concepts. We've recruited two new non-tourism businesses, one of which will be hiring at $21 to $25 an hour. Two other major projects are in the works as well that would have significant impact on our local economy and efforts to diversify. The multimedia and marketing materials are in the final development to recruit new businesses for Eureka Springs. Campaign and materials will be available to all city departments, commission, and key stakeholders interested in helping us recruit new businesses and grow existing businesses. We're really happy to be in the process with some major grant funding for infrastructure improvements that are long needed. We just got word last week that we were awarded a $250,000 street improvement award to overlay Hillside and Grand Avenue. We've also applied for a grant for water line improvements to the city sewer, which looks very promising. And next month, we'll be opening up bids for repair to the tunnel under Armstrong Douglas Street by the Grand Central Hotel, another big infrastructure repair that we've been needing to go. This was funded in total by Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District at no cost to the city. I'm excited for the future of Eureka Springs and the continuation of work on our infrastructure. With help and support of our citizens, we will continue to make Eureka Springs a good place for us to live. And I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak today and to serve as mayor of Eureka Springs. It's my honor to do so. So, thank you. Our next item, we've got under commission and planning, we've got Susan Harmon's application for planning.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Susan Harmon for reinstating her onto the planning commission.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, sing five a saying aye.
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 Any opposed? We still have two positions vacant in planning, position four and position five, so if you're interested, please come on up and fill out an application. I know we've got some people out there who are thinking about it, so. And we still have a position three vacant for the CAPC. And at this time, I want to talk about the hospital, and we've got the chairman of the hospital commission here, but you've probably been reading in the newspaper what I'd like for the City Council to do is, the hospital has hired an architectural firm, Bates Architects, to help them develop preliminary design and cost estimates for renovation of the hospital and possible expansion. During the presentation, it was noted that there was an adjoining piece of property that the hospital probably should go ahead and try to purchase at this time to go ahead and complete the entire area around the hospital for future use. The hospital looked at that and made a study and then made an offer and got an appraisal of that property, and they would like to make it an offer of 100, I believe, $143,000. For this piece of property, which would include a couple of streets that would allow them access from King's Highway back to behind the building. If they didn't have the property, it could theoretically shut them off from future, any future expansion in through there. And I'd like, Michael, do you have, you want to make any comments or? And I can open it up to the City Council for their comments also.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Michael Mary, chair from the hospital commission. Thank you. This piece of property is, exists in the form of three separate lots. One of them is due west of the hospital, incorporating the piece of land that I believe the Purple House is on and, well, right next to the land the Purple House is on, and it includes another 600-square-foot home on that property. The other two pieces of property are behind the hospital building between the hospital and Benton Street. As it stands right now, I'm not sure how these could benefit in expansion, but the one piece that was of major value to the hospital, it was required that all three lots be purchased from the same trust in order to get the one that was most valuable. So first, I'd like to say that the expense of this contract and this land is coming out of commission funds and not out of city funds. So predominantly, as we move forward in improving the hospital, expanding it as we go along, the commission would very much like to have the City Council's approval as we step forward, and we would very much like your approval in this purchase of property.
David?
The, they have the funds set there, the funds are dedicated for health care, it obviously matches, or you wouldn't be talking about buying the land.
That's right.
I've got, I remember all that stuff.
Approved by our attorneys.
And that's that one lot with that little house down the hill.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that would be good for the hospital too, you could use it for doctors.
We had considered using it for visiting physicians, for example.
Yes, but the question that I have is, the hospital is city property, so the commission would be buying that property in the city's name?
Yes, we would be essentially buying it on behalf of the city of Eureka Springs, and then the city would then turn around and put the property in use to the hospital.
Not into the lease with allegiance, but into use with the commission?
Yes.
Correct. This has nothing to do with any management.
It doesn't benefit allegiance in any way.
But I just wanted to clear that up so it was out there, so, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand that you're paying appraised value plus the closing costs.
That's correct.
Which sounded really high. What do those consist of?
I believe that the first numbers for closing costs were really very incorrect, and they were dropped by 90 percent or thereabouts. Is that correct, Barbara?
That was just a wrong appraisal, I mean, that was wrong.
It came in at like $12,000 or something, and it's more, it's like 1,500 or 12.
1,200.
Much, much smaller than was published.
We made an offer based on the appraisal, the owner first came back. Barbara Dix, I'm on the commission. We made an appraisal based, no, we made an offer based on the appraisal. The owner came back and said no, and gave us a verbal counter, which we accepted and paid the, so it ended up being like $141,400. And...
Including closing?
Including the...
$1,400, including closing and title insurance.
Right, right. It's a done, yeah.
Is the contract contingent upon City Council approval?
Yes, ma'am. As a matter of fact, I specifically asked that it be written as such. It requires the mayor's signature, my signature, and City Council approval.
Good, good.
Can you tell me again, Barbara, or Michael, one of you, that why are you buying it? I didn't quite understand.
When the architects came in and did their presentation, they showed us how if we added on to the hospital, if we had that land that could go out, that would help with the expansion. And they also said for future expansions of the hospital, or anything that we could do, that we should have it because it's contingent.
It's adjacent to our current...
It is, but it's also, it's pretty steep.
Well, so is Eureka.
Well, I realize that, but it's, you know, that's...
I know, and we've looked at it, and there are roads that we could take around back to King's Highway and maybe make the expand, you know, there's just different things that, there's no reason for us not to have it.
And I would say too, the, we looked at trying to separate the land, and the owner was not interested.
Well, I understand that, and then, but I just, you know, it's...
Actually, a long time ago, the only way to the emergency room was from Benton Street up that ravine.
Oh, well, that, oh, that was...
I remember that.
It was up Norris Street.
No, well, it came off of Benton and went up to Norris.
Yeah, but it was, it was up Norris Street, it wasn't up that ravine.
So, I mean, who knows what could happen?
Well, but that, but that's not...
We also, as a commission, can only spend our money to benefit the hospital, so we will have to have the city sign an agreement that it will only be used for hospital, for the hospital's use.
Did they, did they get the sewer line fixed?
What sewer line?
The hospital sewer line that runs down there into the alla.
Beats me.
It leaks.
I'm not in charge.
Has it been brought to the attention of the commission?
Well, it was brought to the attention of the city.
I don't know. It is full of city streets, so these lots are divided by city streets.
But, I mean, it's, it's steep, and the streets really don't mean anything as far as practicality.
No, I think the bigger value of the property isn't the fact...
We need to come to the mic, please.
Excuse me. I think the bigger value of the property isn't expansion from Benton Street in as much as it's a matter of expansion from the hospital out. There is a great deal of that property that isn't useful, but there is a portion of it that could be raised slightly to allow the hospital to extend in that direction 100 feet, and that would be enough for us to accomplish any back-building expansion. And frankly, that's what we're looking at. We're thinking in terms of, rather than bringing down the front structure of the hospital, but rather adding on to the back of the building with a facility that we could put new beds in and, you know, modernize the hospital. So expanding in that direction, I think, is the primary goal of the architectural firm that we're working with.
David?
Michael, that's an excellent approach, having obviously a background in health care and having built some hospitals, having the ability and not being landlocked.
Yes.
If you're going to build on to the back of the hospital, you've got that helipad you've got to move, you've got parking considerations.
Exactly.
You should have several access points for outpatient, you should have a separate access point for emergency room coming in. All of the flow and the dynamics require space.
Absolutely.
And personally, I'm very supportive of your plan to grab a lot of land and even potential some sleeping quarters for your physicians in the future. That all makes total sense, and it's a good move. Thank you.
And in the big scheme of things, this is a very small expense.
Yes, it is.
We're looking at millions of dollars in renovations to this facility. This is $141,000.
Yes, it is.
We're sitting on three, close to three and a half million dollars as a commission. We have an income of over $400,000 a year. This is not a big expense for us.
But it's a good expense.
Yes, I honestly believe that it is. Although this was a suggestion of the new architectural firm, I think the commission agrees entirely.
Good.
And our architectural firm has been very active in critical access hospitals, so they know what they're doing. And when they made their presentation, they actually flew a drone over the whole area and said, "You can do this, and this, and this." And we will be getting, after we buy this land, we'll be getting a survey of hospital land.
Good. Anybody else?
So do they need a motion now?
Please, sir.
I make a motion that the hospital commission proceed with purchasing the land as described for a total price of up to $142,000.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, sing five a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, so moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
That brings us up to the HDC positions. We have, again, a couple of vacancies in through there, and we've got a couple of applications. Yes, ma'am?
I make a motion that we reseed Greg Moon on HDC.
Second.
Any discussion?
I served with him for three years, and he was a good commissioner. He was really willing, he wanted to do well, he went to trainings, and I think he would be a good fit.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, sing five a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I'd encourage y'all to get ahold of Josh and talk to him, and we'll bring him up to next meeting.
Okay.
And we also have a vacancy for the cemetery commission, so anybody's interested in that. And that's a, that's a working position, as I understand from Bob. All right, at this point in time, we'll have public comments.
Good evening. My name is Laura Jo Smolli, I'm a resident of...
I'm a resident of Ward Two. And when I heard about city council voting to stop broadcasting meetings, the first thought that came to my head was, what were they thinking? And then I found out that there is no finding out what you were thinking because a motion was made, and it was voted upon. There was no discussion. And I find it very interesting that without discussion, it was a unanimous vote. And it makes, it's somewhat disturbing to know that the council's willing to make major decisions without any discussion about them. So, at this time, since it's on the agenda for this evening, please vote to reinstate broadcasting of the city meetings with... Thanks, closed captioning. Thank you.
Next?
Wait, I have to get my... I have a problem.
You never saw that part, did you?
I don't know why she's using the phone.
You are, but the reset on this is bad.
It won't go any faster.
Where's the Granger sign?
Do you have your phone?
He's advising her another one, so she has two of them.
We actually have, we actually have two.
Since we have money now, we'll do that. I'll bring it back up.
We actually have two of them, so I don't know where it is, but...
Oh, okay.
Okay. My name's Sarah Meyer, and I live up on Cross Street. I'm a citizen of Eureka Springs, and I object to the discontinuation of broadcast and the YouTube posting of the city council meetings. I also object the way that it was done. Council adopted Robert's Rules of Order. Then, in the same meeting, the subject was brought up without being on the agenda and were added as the rules state. There was no discussion, and the vote was unanimous. Even a member who requires a special hearing device for key, to be able to hear the meeting, voted for stopping the captioning. I question the motives behind this. I don't believe it was because of cost. Council members on the record have only been called, have what only could be called retaliation for being held accountable for their responsibilities as elective servants of the taxpayers of Eureka Springs. In previous council meeting, a member tried to limit what the clerk stated in the minutes, as if it were something about writing the whole discourse down was somehow not appropriate. The excuse was a rule in Robert's Rules of Order. Wouldn't a captioned recording be a good check upon the record?
Good evening. Cameron Denauer, resident Ward Two. Again, I wanted to bring up, I'm glad it was brought back up to the agenda, dealing with the broadcasting and closed captioning issue. I don't know how many of you were aware that there was a coalition of citizens and businesses who were ready to put fundraisers together to pay for the closed captioning. But instead, you make a hasty decision without stopping, asking questions, embracing your community, embracing your resources, asking for help to solve this problem, make everybody happy. Now, we have a bunch of angry people based on hasty decisions because, again, the people at this table are not doing due diligence, looking at their local resources, and asking for help. Three businesses, a dozen people, were ready to do fundraisers and pay for the closed captioning. But you never even stop to think, how can the citizens help us? If it's important to the citizens, we can help you. We want to help you if you allow us, if you ask for help. We will help you because it's for the greater community. It's for all of us. If any of y'all lose your hearing, you're going to wish you could have closed captioning. I could be spouting this off in Klingon, and you're damn well sure you'd want to have closed captioning then to understand what the hell's going on. So, let's rethink what we did. It was a big mistake. The table's still open. You can have that back. For these businesses and citizens to still help raise money, to help cover the cost of this, all you have to do is ask and allow people to help. We want to help. We want to be a part of it. It's what community's about. So, let's rethink this, start all over, ask each other for help, and embrace change and growth instead of stepping backwards.
Put your name on the list, Bo.
Okay.
Give everybody a chance.
Did you write that on there?
Thank you. Bo Satori, Ward Two, I think. I just wanted to add my support for going back to broadcasting. The, you know, we have 1,100 voters in town. We want more people engaged with the city council. You have lots of vacancies on commissions. You can speak towards the camera, appealing to the community at large for volunteers for your commissions, but if no one's seeing it, then it's kind of useless at that point. I often watch council meetings and have for over 20 years from home. And it's nice to watch them live. You see what's going on, and then you can, if you see something that you need to come down and address, you can do that. If not, you can mention it to other people, and people know what's been said. So, I think it's really important that we continue to do the live broadcasts, and I think the closed captions is a good idea as well. And you have offers to help with that expense in any way we can. But what's one of the more progressive aspects of our city over the last 25 years is having live broadcasts of our council meetings and all the other commission meetings. They should all be broadcast live and replayed more often than just the next day. So, I hope that you will take that into consideration and resume live broadcasting. Thank you.
Is that it? Alright. Thank you all for your public comments. Appreciate it. Our next item is unfinished business on North Street lease update.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Unfortunately, our city attorney is now, he's been in the hospital, I think, as most everybody is aware of, and has not been able to finish any type of lease update with Dr. Beard. I did send a letter out to Dr. Beard notifying him that, you know, we had a, until we got a formal lease, that he was on a short, he was on a month-to-month lease with understanding that he was to be out of there by the end of March. So... David?
Going back to the North Street, you graciously provided us, when we were doing our tours, a wonderful little CAD drawing of that building and all. And knowing that we're going out of the lease with North Street after a long lack of period of no revenue from it, but whatever, and it is the viable option we have before us at this time, based on votes recently taken at city council, I would like to make a motion at this time that the mayor, as administrator of the city, appoint the building inspector to be the renovation superintendent of this project and start the process of developing the plans and timeline to develop North Street into the city's meeting space.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to amend that motion to permit the mayor to determine himself how the construction project is managed, not constrained by the portion of your motion that makes the code enforcement officer the general contractor.
Do you want to restate your amendment?
Yes. I would like to amend the motion so that, to delete the reference to the code enforcement officer as the general contractor? Was that basically what you said?
He's the building inspector. I didn't call him the code enforcement officer.
Oh, I think that's the same thing.
I don't think so.
So, I'd like to delete that portion of the motion and allow the mayor to determine how the project is managed.
It'd be easier if we can just go back and redo the second and the motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
So, we don't get into the same routine we did the last time? Alright.
That'll save it.
Wait, wait. We've been waving. We need to start shoving these tables so you can see it.
I saw, I saw your hand being waved, but they eyeed the floor.
We are jumping the gun. We cannot sit there and tell people to do stuff when we haven't even finalized anything, much less taken a vote.
Mickey, I think they're trying to establish a motion. That's what, and then we can talk.
They're trying to start stuff, and we haven't even voted on if that's our home or not.
Okay.
Now, we have a clean slate and start with this.
Mr. McClellan?
Mr. Mitchell did not state that the building inspector was going to be any general contractor, that he was just going to oversee the construction of the job. I mean, it still falls under the purview of the mayor anyway. And it's, it's, if it's over $20,000, we've got to have it bid. Is that correct?
Yes.
On something like that in total, or is it each segment of the job?
I think we're needing a motion first before we even get into this.
We've got a motion on the floor to discuss.
No, which is, no.
I took it back, Terry.
I took it back.
Withdraw them all. It's open.
Go ahead, David.
Mickey was right. I make a motion that we engage North Street as the meeting center under development for the city of Eureka Springs.
I'll second that.
Okay. Mickey?
Considering we've had several offers, which is, at least is my understanding, for people who would be willing to rent it for $2,000 a month, and seeing as we have basically an unused and therefore non-money income building right across the street, I really think we need to revisit looking at that because that way, we have money coming in on North Street, and we have a building that doesn't make any money as a home that doesn't cost us any money. Minor repairs, which is going to have to be done, it's the same amount for both buildings, that is a plus-plus. I really think, rather than jump the gun, because we are talking permanent home-type situation, we need to take our time and work this out.
Mr. McClellan?
Yes, could you restate the motion? I'm not sure that I got it specifically. Ann can repeat it, I suppose.
To engage North Street as the meeting space for city meetings.
And engage means?
I'd start the process. That's what I took it to be. The mayor, there is another option. Stay here. It's handicapped. It's ADA compliant. Just sit right here.
We can't see each other.
I think, do you understand the motion, Terry?
Well, I guess it's that it's for the purpose of making that the meeting room plainly. Yeah. Okay. And if that's what it means, then that's...
What it means?
Yeah, that's what I wanted, I wanted to make sure of.
Alright. Another discussion?
So, voting for this is voting to move to North Street?
Technically, yes.
Any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor of...
Could we do a roll call?
This, this motion?
If you don't mind, is that possible? It'd be...
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClellan?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Schneider?
Thoroughly no.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this going to be a three-vote thing, or is this a one-time vote?
Four-two, it passes.
Has anybody bothered to think about all the different problems and situations in moving over there from downtown, especially starting with parking, since that's hospital parking, and there will be times when it will need people? And no, you can't sit there and park in special places?
Mickey, the motion's already been made and passed.
Well, it can always be pulled back when people turn their brains on.
Our second item is new businesses, ordinance to add planning recommendations to the city code. We're not ready on that, so I guess we will defer that until Mr. Weaver comes back in there. Motion to discuss in fourth quarter finances.
So moved.
The fourth quarter payroll taxes, receipts, and check register are in this packet. The debt service and the bank balances are in the December report that you looked at earlier today, and it will all be available for your review if you're interested. I don't know if I should actually do that.
Any comments? Alright, that brings us up to item number three, is a reconsideration of our vote for broadcasting.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Because the council voted, what we need to do is to have the, someone make a motion to, I think it would be unanimous, to reconsider this vote, please. Yes, ma'am.
I am proud that this council has moved the city council meetings to the auditorium where citizens can, I'm sorry, observe the council meetings, and council members must face their constituents when making decisions. If I could pinpoint the greatest contributors to council discord and discourtesy, I would blame the council's meeting in the courthouse jury room where citizens could not attend and council did not have to confront the citizens. However, another factor contributed to council discord and discourtesy, the broadcasting of council meetings. Certain council members relish playing to the camera, and certain members of the community love watching the reality show. Certain council members love starring in. Now that council is no longer meeting in the jury room and that citizens can now attend council meetings, it is time to revert to good government, where citizens attend meetings, and council members must face their constituents. As long as council is broadcasting meetings, citizens will have no incentive to attend, and the televised reality slugfest will continue. I therefore move that the recording of council meetings, council and commission meetings, be discontinued and that such meetings be recorded solely by the taking of minutes by the city clerk.
Do you have a second?
I think we voted that the last time, didn't we?
No.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's including the city council, all meetings, one at a time.
And it also is a discontinuation of all recording.
Is this for discussion?
Any second?
Is this for this?
She didn't have a second yet.
Our motion fails for lack of second. I still would like to see if we get a second. Mickey?
First, I want to point out, I was not here last meeting that this vote was taken, and no, I would not have voted for it. Maybe it's because I've lived in this town for too long. Maybe it's because I have been...
Before we even talk about this, can I get a motion for reconsideration of the vote?
I move that we reconsider.
Second.
I thought we did that, I'm sorry.
No, alright. Mickey, I'm sorry.
Anyway, I don't know, maybe it's because I was a typical Eureka and working three jobs while we raised our kids so we could afford to live here. Not only do you have handicappers who, for various reasons, cannot come to a meeting, no matter where they are, you also have quite a few older people who do not have computers, who do not have cable. So, what you're doing by cutting off all broadcasting, and I do understand it's all or nothing, what you're doing is you are alienating and cutting off an awful lot of this town. When I was working three jobs... When I was working three jobs so we could raise kids and live in this town, the only chance I had to see council meetings was when I sat there and ate dinner watching it because I was leaving an hour later to another job. When you don't broadcast, that people cannot see it. Well, I have friends who are working in a shop on Monday nights. The only way they can stay up with what's going on is to watch it on a little teeny TV that they bring to the shop so they can watch it. You are cutting these people off. No, we don't have the money to sit there and even figure in round figures, a dollar a minute. You have to do every single city meeting, not just council. Planning, HCC, parks, the whole nine yards, two meetings a month, that comes to a ton of money. I agree with Cameron, with Bear, we need to ask for help in that regard. We cannot cut these people off. It is not right, it is not fair, it's very self-centered and egotistical, which is the same way all this crap came up in the beginning with people not giving time to get this done properly. And that's all it would have taken. We are trying, but we do not have the resources to just jump in and do it. We have to sit there and think of our constituents, our friends, our neighbors, rather than being mad at this person or that person or whatever anybody's problem is. And yes, I have had words with various people here and they know who they are, but we all agree the same thing. People have got to be able to stay up with what is going on in the city, and that doesn't mean just reading, no offense, guys, a newspaper article. That doesn't cut it. I have purposely not watched the DVD from the meeting I stormed out of two weeks ago. I purp, three weeks ago, I purposely have not watched it so I can be 100% like one of our city people who has not been able to see this meeting. Yes, I read the article. I was infuriated to find out there had been no discussion. How dare you make a decision of this size and this many years with absolutely no discussion? That's appalling, and that's my opinion.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Christie did make some interesting points, and there's a lot I agree with her on. One of the things that I did, I went online and I looked at YouTube, and I was surprised by the number of views on, I think they had 10 meetings listed, and it's about three-quarters of our population. And that told me that people are actually watching those. And I think they, like me, and I did enjoy watching them too, but not, not for reasons of reality TV. I liked Keeping Up because I was on the commissions, and I've had numerous friends tell me nicely how disappointed they were, so that's why I voted to reconsider.
We haven't voted to reconsider yet.
Oh, I made the motion.
Motion is made, and if there's no other discussion, probably do a roll call vote for the motion to reconsider.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify, the motion to reconsider is not a vote on broadcast.
Correct.
Okay. Not a vote what?
It's just to reconsider the vote.
So bring up another revote on this.
Yes, correct.
Mr. McCone?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
No.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Are you talking to me because your mic's not working? Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Five-one.
Okay, now I have a vote to.
Somebody has to make motion to continue.
Broadcasting.
Broadcasting, and that will include closed captioning, all meetings to be totally ADA compliant.
Second.
Any further discussion? Any discussion? All right, all those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, I'm opposed.
Okay. All right. We will begin rebroadcasting. That brings us to agenda setting. Council? Yes, sir.
I'd like to add, potentially if the attorney's capable, the ordinance for paying down the bond payments, that, the amortization schedule that we've talked about, that we start formalizing that process so we don't lose it.
We'll put it on the agenda.
Thank you, sir.
I don't know where, when that will happen.
Oh, I understand, but.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
I'd like an update on the Dairy Hollow Trail grant funds.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, Mickey?
I'd like to add a discussion of, I don't know how to word this, of working out a way to do as Cameron had suggested, getting together with the local community to do fundraisers and maybe appoint him chairman. That can be secondary, but I'd like the discussion on how we can raise money to pay for the editing, which is the part that's costing so much.
I need a second. Now, I think that's something that Cameron brought up, and I'm going to leave it up to Cameron to follow through with. I don't know whether that needs to be a council discussion, so thank you.
Okay. I thought we'd do a commission appoint you had.
All right, any further? All right, council comments? Mr. Mitchell?
Actually, I have two, and one I wanted to clarify for sure. Back at the last formal meeting we had, I made a motion about suspending all engagement with the Eureka Springs Community Center Foundation. And I wanted to clarify that. After I made that motion, we seconded it. Then there was an amendment to revoke the prior vote about moving council meetings to the community center. That passed, and then we went back and my motion passed. I wanted people to be very clear, the motion and the discussion was in regards to engaging the Eureka Springs Community Center Foundation until such time as the city of Eureka Springs' elected officials, in conjunction with the legal counsel, conducted full diligence on the Eureka Springs Community Center Foundation before we entered into any type of agreement or leases or future stuff with the foundation. It was not a slam negative against the concept of a community center/business park as a whole. It was doing due diligence with that organization until we had conducted what should be very clear, distinct, and in-depth discussions about a business that we're engaging. That's all. So please don't mix the fact that that is some way slamming the concept of a community center because that was not the case whatsoever, nor the people that are on the foundation. It was literally a business decision, clean and simple. And the best way to do it was as the council person mentioned, let's revoke, move back from that, and the motion is still there. If the foundation wants to come before the council or engage the city in any way, it's still open, but the motion also still stands about what we need. Number one. Number two, I wrote this out so I won't mess it up. This is a response that I have. They say a picture's worth a thousand words, so I want to show you a picture now. As you can see, this is a billboard located on a major artery into the city of Eureka Springs from the south. It clearly has significance to the prosperity and well-being of Eureka Springs, its tourism industry, its citizens, and even its disabled citizens. It calls into question the motives of those who place this billboard, and it illustrates that the motives might not be as pure as being displayed via public forums and in person. This billboard is an egotistic crusade that is more in line with personal interest and recognition than that of ADA compliance. It casts a negative light on the entire city of Eureka Springs, its tourism industry, its citizens, and its disabled citizens. It's selfish, egotistic in nature, and not an accurate reflection of the diversity of this town or its history. To say otherwise is just not being true, and all you have to do is check out a list of 18 things about the city and its governance posted online. Enough bashing of the city, its citizens, and attempting to do harm to our major economic engine driver for the selfish ego-driven needs of a few. I have no trouble exercising my First Amendment rights and calling out what I consider to be fake information.
Ms. Green?
No, nothing. I have no comment.
Bob?
I have two comments. About a year or so ago, I made the comment that I was really impressed with how the local citizens could come up to you in the store or on the street and let you know they didn't like what you did in a very nice and polite way. And again, I've had a lot of comments in the past two weeks about the vote with broadcasting, but every person has been just as nice and polite and kind to me as they could be, but firm in letting me know that they weren't happy with my vote. I would like to say that as far as reality show theatrics and playing to the camera, that's bad behavior on our part, and you don't correct that by cutting off the camera you try to get the people to control themselves. Thank you.
Mickey?
I personally have not noticed any difference in attitude or behavior on anybody's part here. We've all been the same way, we always have. Very forthright, very straightforward, pretty much showing where we stand, whether we are representing ourselves or our city. And I think that's been made pretty obvious in the last year in various ways by various people. I think this billboard is appalling and disgusting, and it kind of shows me that there are certain people who put this billboard out that really don't care about the well-being of our city. And if you don't care for our city, move. If you do care for it, then try to promote it in a positive way and help things in a positive way rather than hurt us and our income. Remember a couple minutes ago, the three jobs that I worked so I could raise my children in a safe, clean environment? Yes, it was worth it. You can't do it if we lose our tourism because of being self-centered rather than trying to be helpful, being narrow-minded. And with that in mind, I would like to congratulate my Marine son on becoming a grandpa for the first time. Everybody knows Jeremy, he has finally survived 20-plus years in the Marines and is now a grandpa. Congratulations, Jeremy. That's it.
Ms. McCone?
It's all good.
All right. We got some good news. We just received notice from the State Aid Street Committee, as I mentioned in our, in the city, state of the city address, $250,000 to overlay Hillside and Grand Avenue. So that's going to be a big improvement in through there. As far as events, boy, this is a mighty grand month. We've got, just in the next two weeks, we've got February the 2nd is the Coronation Ball at 6:00 PM at the end of the Ozarks, and on the 3rd, we'll have the Eureka Grand Night Parade, 6:00 PM along Spring Street. Then on February the 3rd, that following the parade will be the Blacklight Ball at Chelsea's, and on the 9th will be the Joker's Ball at 6:00 PM at the end of the Ozarks. And then on the 10th will be the Eureka Grand Day Parade, 2:00 PM at Spring Street. And then that evening will be the Mayor's Ball at 6:00 PM at the Basin Park Hotel. And then finally, the, on the 11th will be the Jazz Brunch at 11:30 AM at the Crescent Hotel. So let the good times roll.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Since we voted to rebroadcast again, does that mean tonight's meeting will be put on YouTube and cable? People, I'm sure, want to know.
Probably. Yeah. I mean, that's, you know, yes, I mean, we voted to do it, so.
Murdo can do it, huh?
Are we still doing it at 12 and 6?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, get a motion to.
So moved.
Is it possible?
Yeah, all right. Get a motion and second?
Motion and second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all.